All right, I'm calling to order our special workshop of Wednesday, sorry, Tuesday, June 8. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Student Trustee Corso Clark.
Here.
Student Trustee Mala.
Here.
Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Davidson. Thank you. Trustee Duran.
Here.
Vice President Dos.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
And Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Can we have the mission and vision and meeting norms read, please?
Yes, the mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are to maintain a focus on what is best for our students, to ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully, to endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students, and to make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view even if one disagrees.
Thank you, and we need a motion to approve our agenda, which has just one item, the elementary school plans for student achievement.
I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
Okay, Student Trustee Corso Clark.
Yes.
Student Trustee Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Vice President Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes. Thank you.
The agenda passes unanimously, so I'm going to hand it over to our staff, but also if whoever takes it could let us know whether you want the board to ask questions in between each school or if you'd prefer to do all three and then have the board ask questions at the end.
Thank you for that. I'll pick it up here from here. School Board President Hinckley, we prefer to have the questions table until the end. We think it's much smoother like that in terms of the flow. As you know, these are annual school plans for student achievement. It should be the heart and soul of our work, and one of the main components of our school plans for student achievement is just that, for student achievement. And so the big issue moving forward is about how we look at data and how we respond to data in a way where we engage in what we would call a cycle of continuous improvement. Tonight, you're going to hear about how we've been doing things, and then at the end, right before questioning, I would give a little bit about what kind of adjustments we would make moving forward to be in line with our overall goals that's associated with our LCAP, so that we're all moving in the same direction at the same time, serving each individual kids based on his or her needs. And I'm excited about the work that has been done and the possibilities in our immediate future. But at this time, I hand it over to our Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight, the elementary principals will be presenting their school plans for student achievement. We have about 90 minutes, so I've asked the principals to walk you through their school plans in about 15 minutes. So I will monitor that time, and then for Dr. Wells' recommendation, we'll save about half of the time at the end of the meeting so that you can ask questions about the site plans. Just to quickly remind you that the questions around which the principals will be framing their presentation, their brief discussion are here as follows. The first question is around how the most recently approved school plans were implemented during this school year, as well as a discussion of any successes or challenges. The second question asks about goals for the upcoming 21, 22 school year, as reflected in their school plans. They're going to talk to you about the data that informed those goals and then their plans for progress monitoring. And then the third question, or the third sort of topic around which they will share information, is just additional resources or supports needed to meet the goals. So each of the principals has prepared just a little presentation, just to sort of help visually track as they go through, walk through their SIPSA's. We did not rush him both for who would go first, so we will, I think, start with Ms. Poole, and then we'll go from there. So I'll monitor the time, about 15 minutes or so, just to share your information, and then we'll go to the next site. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Williams. Julie, I can go ahead and share my screen? Yeah, okay, great. Just gonna take a minute to share my slideshow. It's... There we go. You guys seeing that okay? Okay, so, good evening, everybody. Sort of evening, afternoon. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk about our site plans. This was a heck of a year to implement our site plans, and I'm really glad to be here to talk about some of the challenges that we faced and the successes that we had, even in spite of our circumstances, and how we're planning on moving forward. So yeah, so to start off with implementing our 2021 SIPSA, we did face some significant challenges. Student engagement is the heart of student learning. It's the heart of teaching and learning, and attendance definitely changed by us starting the year all in remote and building community and relationships remotely. That was definitely a challenge for us, because part of that piece around teaching and learning that's just so important for students to learn is, you know, being able to take risks and feel comfortable taking risks, and that requires a relationship and a class community of safety that has to do with our goal number three of our site plans, which I'll get into a little bit more later. We were also a bit challenged this year by data to inform our practices. As you'll see when we get a little bit further into this slideshow, we were relying on state testing data from two years ago, because last spring we closed due to COVID and we didn't implement any of the state testing that we typically do. And we also were challenged by our individual assessments and informal assessments. You know, teachers are always assessing kiddos. When we're in the classroom and we're live and in person, we can, you know, the walking around and the pulling of kids in groups and having those conversations, it's just an ongoing assessment piece. So there's formal and informal assessment that definitely proved to be a challenge this year in the amount of data we were able to collect, since we spent a good chunk of the year online, and, you know, until March 29. So yeah, so that's what I mean by assessment conditions and individual assessments. We did implement the FastBridge assessment this year. I think that was a huge success and a wonderful lift from our reading intervention teachers that I'll get into in just a little bit. But the broad, the depth and the breadth of assessment data that we had to inform our practice was a bit more limited this year. When we pivoted to in-person instruction, our teacher reassignments from our librarian to our music to PE and ELD teachers definitely impacted us, as you'll see as we get a little bit further into it. We were using them previously to provide some individual support to students who were in need of that support, and that changed at the end of, at the end of March. And also the recreation of the schedules, right? So impacted services that kids were able to provide and also the amount of services we could provide due to being in person and some students staying remote. So those were a few of our challenges that we had this year. And we also had some successes. We got really focused really early on about identifying students who we were, who teachers were concerned about. We had, you know, this was for mental health concerns and academic concerns as well. While I feel like it's been part of our practice for a while to be, you know, targeting our supports to students who we feel could benefit, we got a little more systematic about it, because we had to, frankly, this year due to our circumstances. So there were online forums created, there was a lot more teacher focus and support focus around preventing individual supports. Our mental health team, our counseling interns at Marin, it's run by Joanne Wile, who is wonderfully supportive and amazing, and she definitely did a lot of heavy lifting to get some extra support for kiddos in need of mental health support and making those connections, which was a lot of emailing and a lot of phone calling. You know, the conversations that you have just walking across the playground don't really happen, didn't happen this year until we came back in person. And so we got really, I feel like we focused our lens a bit more and a little differently than we have done in the past, and I felt like we developed some systems that we'll be able to take with us next year as we look forward to come back fully in person. So the staff that was providing this support, I definitely need to mention during the school closure, the mental health support and the academic support were, again, our specialists. You know, due to the changing nature of their schedule, they, you know, are some, due to the changing nature of their, and the amount of time that they spent with students, we definitely made choices around, you know, providing library support versus, you know, providing time for our librarian and others as well to carve out time to check in with individual students who maybe weren't as engaged on Zoom as we would have liked to have been, or, you know, who are needing that extra touch point and that extra adult to say, "Hey, what's going on? Let me help you go through your assignments and check off your list of what needs to happen to stay caught up on the academics of what happens in class." And that was part of what worked for us really well this year. That I'd be remiss to not mention that the funding for that hourly support staff came from School Care. They recognized last year that we were going to be in need going into this school year, but we weren't quite sure about what we would need. So they, so we would, and they gave us the flexibility as elementary principals to kind of hold off in different buckets some funding to spend so that we could, as we became aware of our needs, be able to target that support. And early on in the school year, this was one place that we were able to target pretty quickly, is to provide hourly support to our prep teacher staff to do some of those touch-ins with students who are really needing it. So that was something that I thought was really successful. Our collaboration times got a lot more focused around Zoom, like supporting one another around how lessons to implement. Through Zoom, teaching practice changed dramatically this year. When I think about all of the technical and digital supports and all the technical pieces, and I remember when we first started chatting about the possibilities of Zoom, this was before the pandemic hit, and we were like, huh, how would that work, right? Like, we made great strides in our level of instruction and what we were able to provide, and our collaboration times helped teachers support one another in getting different tools and getting, and being more effective as online teachers. We pulled our ILT, our instructional leadership team together three times each trimester this year to focus on report cards. And while that may seem like focus on report cards, what's all about, the details of, and the importance of focusing on report cards was about alignment and about staying focused. We all recognized last summer, right, and early on in the pandemic, spring of last year, that there was just going to be no way that we could teach everything remotely that we did in person. There was just, you know, given the limitations and the constraints and the time, it was just not going to be possible. And so we had to get really specific about what we needed to teach and prioritize those pieces. And so it felt important not only to stay together as grade levels at school sites, but also to stay in touch with our colleagues across the district, because as we all know, being a small district, our kiddos come to school in middle school, and it's important to support them similarly in what they're learning as they matriculate through the grade levels, so that when they land in those sixth grade classrooms, they all have similar foundations of academic exposure. So that focus on report cards was a lot more than, you know, how are we going to grade? But that was definitely part of the conversation too. But it was those areas, those broad areas of, you know, let's hit this topic and that topic, and what are we all going to agree to do each trimester? And I'm really proud of our ILT teams for taking on that work and finessing it through, even with their colleagues at the sites when they came back from that. More collaboration is our SST, IEP, and 504 meetings. These were all conducted online and actually proved to be really successful in this format, in this platform, I guess you could say. It meant no travel time, it meant busy working parents were able to log in in the middle of the day and be a little more, we could all be a little bit more flexible about our availability. And I think that that's something that we hope to continue for next year. Oh yeah, and a few more things. So this gets to what I was just discussing, that increased parent engagement over Zoom. During the closure, we had monthly coffees with the principal. Attendance was wonderful. I really appreciated the interest of our community and the willingness to log in. I think these were at 8:00, 8:15 in the morning, when we were all fully remote. And it was a really great way for me to kind of talk about the changes and the pieces that we were seeing, you know, and the predictions of what could be happening and the change that was on the horizon. There just was a lot to talk about this year, far more than in any other year, I would say. And so having that parent engagement and that ability to log in in the morning was just a really, I thought it was really beneficial. We saw the same sort of, we saw the same sort of thing with our PTA, PTA and, oops, sorry, that's a typo, committee meetings and our parent education nights, that we definitely had a lot more exposure to those. We put a lot of work into our parent education nights, and it's lovely to see a broad attendance. Our district-wide professional development was fabulous. We continued our foundations training for kindergarten and first grade. Foundations is a phonics-based program that helps kiddos learn to read, build the foundation of our language support in order to become readers in kindergarten and first grade. Our FastBridge training for teachers was, again, I can't say enough about our intervention team across the district to not only help identify this tool, but get it launched in terms of teacher training and implementation. They were invaluable. Jen Gritman killed it with tech trainings. I don't know how else to say that. It was a really needed, infinitely valuable support. Our teachers really needed that sort of, you know, just a tech go-to to make online learning work. And our anti-racist teaching PDs that we had monthly, just had our wrap-up, I want to say, two weeks ago with Jen and Marie, the positive feedback from all of those PDs was just phenomenal. This is work that we have to continue in our district. I know it's something that we're all committed to, but I just can't say enough about the success of those PD sessions this year. So the data that we used to inform our practice was, yeah, the California State Dashboard, but again, that data was old. It was 2018 to 2019, and the California Healthy Kids Survey from 1920, from the 1920 school year. So that was, the CHIC survey was given to fifth graders during the closure, or maybe just before the closure. And it was our very first year of FastBridge. We are learning a lot about this important assessment. It's a norm-referenced assessment for reading and for math. It's a screener for students at risk. You'll see in the results that I display in a minute. And we delivered it during the fall trimester, trimester two and trimester three. There's another, we could have implemented in trimester one as well, but that was super close to the fall implementation. That's why we made that optional. I just want to mention that participation rates, we didn't have 100% participation, because not everybody was able to complete this online. And that being said, we had a pretty, it was in the 95% or more of our students still completing it, but I just did want to mention that it wasn't quite everybody, and that we're recognizing that that's something that we need to, that we look forward to having 100% participation for next year. So here's our ELA data from the FastBridge AE Reading Test. This was given to second through fifth graders at Marin, and these are our results. So it is a screener, and so the way that we look at the scores on this graph is the lightest is the very advanced, and then it goes to low risk, and the pink and red indicate some and high risk. So we started off with our fall administration with 11% of our students experiencing some risk or high risk. This is a signal to our intervention teachers to be, you know, taking a look at who's on their list and making sure that we're meeting needs there. It's also a place where we look to refer students to possibly SSTs, which can lead to 504 plans and, or possibly even special education. You will notice, I know that there's been a lot of talk about learning loss this year, and as you can see, from the fall administration, we went down about 5% in the third trimester. Okay, so informing, oh, and this is the AE Reading Growth Chart. I thought that this was really interesting to take a look at. Actually, it's Ms. Georgetown who kind of pointed me in this direction, which is really helpful. But again, to think about how much growth our students experienced overall, you'll see that about 15% of our kiddos experienced flat growth this year, but then it goes from modest to typical to aggressive. To see, you know, 50, 60% of our kiddos achieving typical and aggressive growth is really encouraging. Of course, that's something that we want to celebrate without losing track of these pink and red bars, understanding that those are kids and they have names and we need to address their needs. But having this kind of assessment tool that helps us dig into this kind of data is going to be really helpful to let us know where to start off in the fall. So our goals for next year are, yeah, growth for all students, and let's close that achievement gap. I know that that's something that we talk about a lot in our district, and it's something that is, you know, focusing on what individual students need, especially those who come from historically marginalized populations. We definitely are focusing our lens there and looking forward to growth for all students. But that's going to require regular data analysis using FastBridge. I think that more digging into what this tool, this assessment tool can provide us with is going to be where I look forward to spending a lot of our time and energy next year to really understand all the complexities of it. I can't say that staff and I are, you know, know everything there is to know about FastBridge this year. We've learned a lot, and it's clear that there is a whole lot more to learn. So from there, looking at the data and then identifying intervention supports that focus on our most at-risk students, which includes double-bird reading support in first through third grade, we still appreciate that early bird, late bird schedule. It allows us to double our efforts on our most struggling students. Phonics work, continuing that work in kindergarten and first grade is going to be really important as we move forward. Providing teachers with release days to conduct these assessments in kindergarten and first grades, these are one-on-one tests, and they take a lot of time to administer. Boy, first grade really put in a ton of time, and kindergarten as well. But providing those release days for them to give those assessments is going to be important. And while it technically relates, it kind of relates to goal number three around community, I wanted to include continued focus on culturally responsive teaching practices, because that does help our ELA achievement, and it does help our math achievement. So continuing to focus on those is going to be important for next year. I know I'm just checking time. I think I'm going to start talking real quickly here. So similar, a similar graph for our AMATH assessment on FastBridge, again, for second to fifth graders, you'll see a similar decline. We went down about 6% from the fall to trimester three. Keep in mind, please, that the standards are raised every year or each trimester, right? So it's not that they did, you know, worse based on how the fall assessment was administered, but it was based on what all students, you know, across the board should be gaining by T3 and having that go down just a smidge of a bit, 6% in that third trimester, while at the same time showing that many, many, many of our students are still doing well. This 100% bar is likely due to some teachers giving that first trimester assessment. It wasn't everybody by any stretch of the imagination, so I just want to, you know, point that out in looking at this data here. And again, the growth rate from fall to the third trimester on our AMATH assessment for second to fifth grade shows a very similar pattern of typical and aggressive growth for many students and then modest and flat growth for a number of students as well. And that's going to be an area that we look forward to tackling when we come back in the fall. But it's great to have this kind of data for it. So in math, what we are hoping to achieve is growth for all students, and again, focusing on that achievement gap, which doesn't, if this is similar to reading, focusing on regular data analysis. And at Marin, we've been using some of our FTE allocation for intervention specifically for math. This will be the fourth year that we've done this. It's only point two, but it feels like it's definitely worth it to provide some of this focus on our math students and in need. And so we also support additional hourly math intervention with the help of School Care to pay for that. We're going to need to focus on some professional development for math intervention staff, because it's hourly support, these aren't always folks who are part of our regular math, are part of our regular team of teachers. And so making sure that they have the skills and support they need to work with our students in the most need is going to be really important. That double-bird math support is again, is again, going to be used next year. We look forward to reviving our math camp for kindergartners. This was a math intervention that Ms. Ritchie actually started. I have to credit her for that here at Marin. But it was a really lovely idea and way to get, way to reach our kindergartners with games and activities that were, that looked like a whole lot of fun, but reinforcing some super basic math concepts that are important. And again, continuing to focus on our culturally responsive teaching practices, because that implements, or supports academic success across all areas. So then, and finally, our climate data, our third goal of providing a safe environment for all students. The California Healthy Kids Survey that was given last year showed 77% of our kids felt school connectedness. 91% felt strong academic motivation and high expectations from our adults in school. 87% our school safety areas, 85% reporting that they felt safe at school. 96% reporting that they feel safe on the way to and from school. And then mental health pieces. I know that there's been a lot of concerns this year. We look forward to addressing those and continuing to address those next year, but I thought these were interesting data points that about 11% of our fifth graders were reporting that they go to bed after 10:00. We know that sleep is so important to everyone's mental health. And this piece around experiencing sadness, 15%, this was pre-pandemic, and would be interesting to take a look at how much that changes in our, if at all, on our next California Healthy Kids Survey. All right, so our school climate goal, I'll just shrink this piece here, for next year is to provide an emotionally and physically safe environment in which kids are connected to school, supported by teachers and staff, accepted and respected for who they are, have positive interactions with others every day, and have a welcoming climate accepting of diversity of all kinds. And some of our strategies there are to implement Second Step, Second Step Up, and continuing with our conflict manager program. I should say the Second Step Up program was developed by Joanne Wile and others in the district and our counseling interns to address race and racism. And that was, that happened about four years ago, and we look forward to continuing with that program. Focusing on internet safety during library time for all students. This has been an area that our librarians have focused on, but we recognize the need even more so coming out of a digital pandemic. And our structured noontime activities, seeing the kids play on the playground has been absolute joy in coming back to school. And it makes it clear too that we need to focus on providing those structured activities to help kids remember how to follow the rules and how to get along and how to work through the inevitable infinite number of conflicts that arise on the yard. Continuing our strategies around providing mental health referrals and individual and group supports, we're looking forward to maintaining some of the systems that we implemented this year and finessing them as we come back to school in person and continuing professional development on anti-racist teaching practices. So that's a little bit about that one, and whoops, it's not letting me scroll down. There we go, okay, so progress monitoring. How we intend to take a look at this is for all students, we intend to continue the FastBridge administration for the fall T2 and T3 terms. And in addition to all of the additional informal and formal assessments that teachers are used to doing when they are back at school in person, keeping our students on the radar. Like I said previously, we implemented new systems. This is that lead to SST meetings, more staff collaboration, both formal and formal in the form of, you know, meetings that are called and just chats that we have to discuss and problem solve for all students. For students, whoops, sorry. For students, whoops, sorry. For students receiving math and reading intervention, this is going to be part of our progress monitoring during the fall T2 and T3 period. I think part of that additionally for our math program is about every 10, 10 weeks, we use this program called Do the Math by Marilyn Burns. It's specifically designed for math intervention and there's a progress monitoring tool attached to that program every 10 weeks so that students are quickly identified as whether, as, as to whether or not they need continued support or whether or not they're no longer in need. And so those, those groups can be flexible. In terms of special education, our regular 504 and IEP meetings. And in, and then thinking about areas for growth as a school, developing some protocols to specifically analyze our FastBridge data is going to be really important in moving forward. So other resources and supports needed. The district support with science and history pilots and curriculum adoptions is going to be super important moving forward. I know that Ms. Williams was hot on the trail of implementing these before the closure and, and we look forward to getting back to these. There was reasons that we couldn't continue with our pilots due to our, our remote learning circumstances, but we look forward to getting those back on track. We, again, mentioning that there, we will definitely be needing more staff training and support on FastBridge, including dashboard, their dashboard and analysis there. The continued district-wide focus and professional development on anti-racist teaching practices. We appreciate the continued support for small class sizes for our youngest learners. We think this year especially coming back from this pandemic, that's going to be really important. And something that's been on my mind for a long time is reviewing our enrollment policies and procedures. The way that we enroll our school, our students in our schools creates specific populations at each school that let, that can, that, that tend to flavor, flavor how, so I'm just going to be super straight about it. It tends to go by, by parent choice, which tends to be neighborhood schools. So we rare, we get very few students from UC Village, while Ocean View gets many of those students as well. And this contributes to the diversity and of a school student body. And it exposes our students to, it can expose students to a broad range of diversity. But having that focused at one school is, is definitely has an impact that we continue to see each year. And over the last couple few years at Marin, since we've been talking about construction and our populations are getting mixed up a little bit more, we're absolutely welcoming for more diversity than, over the past few years than we have seen previously. And we would love to see that continue. And I believe that that might require taking a look at our enrollment policies once, as we move forward. So I think, I think that is the end of my presentation.
Thanks, Ms. Poole.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask Ms. Georgetown if you would go next. So fortunately, our elementary sites work very closely together. So a lot of the context that Ms. Poole provided in her presentation would be applicable to what is going to be presented by Ocean View and then also Cornell. And so I'm going to ask you, Ms. G, to go ahead and start. And I'm going to just say you've got about 15 minutes. And if you would just time yourself accordingly, I'll give you a little reminder if you're getting a bit over time. Because we want to make sure that there's time at the end for questions. And I know also at the end, Dr. Wells wants to also have an opportunity to discuss. So go for it, Ms. G. You're muted, Ms. G. I thought it was a really nice slideshow. You're still muted, Terry.
You know what? It might make for a better presentation if I remain muted. Anyway, thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity. As Melissa stated, you know, any chance we have to come and speak with the board or the community about what we do and how we do it is always a pleasure. And I do want to thank Ms. Poole for her in-depth presentation because much of what she does is what I do and what we do, Liz does. So you're going to see some, some, some repetition here. So I'll try not to belabor it too much. And go ahead and try to move to the next slide. How come I'm not making it?
If you hover in the bottom left corner, Ms. G, you'll see the little arrow. You should be able to use that.
Oh, well, thank you for that, that tip. All right. Our SIPSA implementation for the 2021 school year. Challenges and successes, in many ways, they were the same. We tried to address our challenges by recognizing in this year, being in remote learning, that that was by far the most challenging thing that we had. So getting our students engaged required a lot of effort. While at the same time, I would say that was also one of our strengths. We broadened out in the various ways of engaging students through resources, through staying in touch with them, by pulling in teachers to work outside of their regular time to touch base with students who may be having trouble. Another challenge again has to do with how do we collect data? How do we work with students? Teachers do a lot of informal data collection and assessments. And in remote learning, that was particularly challenging. Pivoting our instructional model was probably our greatest challenge, but again, probably our greatest success in the ability to be able to see how teachers who, to one side, maybe rarely used much technology, to see them by the end of this year to be quite experts at it. As well as our students, particularly our younger students, the ability for them to know how to work with, with technology. Probably the most painful challenge was the reassignment of our teachers, taking our prep teachers and having to put them into the classroom, some of our specialist teachers and putting them in the classroom. When, particularly when we pivoted back into the classroom. Successes, much like what Ms. Poole said, identifying our students, making sure we knew which students needed the greatest level of support and how we could find ways to provide that for them. Site and district PD, I want to particularly call out our reading and ELD teachers. The ability to, across the district, be able to regularly collaborate was something that I heard from many of them that this year, they learned a lot from each other and were able to really find ways to kind of get on the same page and learn from one another. One of the things I wanted to mention about report card success, I, I believe really is what we're going to see in the future. Report cards are a, a form of documenting students' current experience so that we then in the future can refer to it and use it as a resource. And I think this report card this year, as the years go by, is going to become an important resource for teachers and for parents to refer back to around just how this year was seen from the teacher, by the student and through the teacher. So I think the report card plays an important role there. The data that we looked at is our past CAPS data, which is a few years old. I was counting it up and right now, the only students who are with us now, who played a part in that data collection are our current fifth graders. And they did not take the CAPS this year. So it's really data that's quite outdated. So we won't spend much time on it as far as the data itself. But that data does have trends and we can, I can tell you that the trends from the years prior to that were not a lot different. So it is helpful in that way. And the California Healthy Kids Survey, again, which kind of helps us get a sense for what is the culture of the school and how the students, how they feel their, their experience at school was. And again, the FastBridge data is our first year in getting it. It's a norm reference assessment for reading and math. And I think the thing that I keep reminding myself is it's not a, it's, the way we use it this year was not intended to be like the CAPS or SBACK data around student achievement. It really, its intention was this year for screener. Who are the students and how are the students doing and where, where are their needs? We did a fall assessment, second trimester assessment, and the end of the year, third trimester assessment. Our current data that we look at from our CAPS and our FastBridge data includes fall and the T3 scores, second through fifth grade. What I'm showing you here is the one piece of data that Ms. Poole also showed you. And that was the thing that I was most interested in is, over the course of the year, how were our students learning? Where was their growth? Who was, who was checking into the way in which they, we were instructing and the way they were learning and where were some of the struggles? So what we see here is about 40% of our students showed flat or modest growth and approximately 60% of our students showed what we would consider typical growth in any school year to aggressive growth. One of the things that I was referring, talking to this data about with one of my reading specialists and one of the things she wanted to remind me is, the group of students in the flat to modest growth, we don't know what their scores were. We don't know if they were high achieving students or students who may have struggled. All we know is that over the course from the fall to the spring, they showed little growth. But we don't know where they were at initially. So what I like about this data is it really offers us a chance to ask lots of really good questions moving forward. And then the same thing with the FastBridge math. You'll see some similar scores. 30, 40% of our students showed flat to modest growth with approximately 60% of our students showing typical to aggressive growth. So we were about at a halfway mark between students who are hanging in there or showing kind of static, static growth with others really feeding in or hooking in to the type of instruction given to them. So again, for me, these are really, this is interesting data to take a look at in some ways to reflect how students respond to various types of instruction. California Healthy Kids Survey that was done a couple of years ago, 1920, we took a look at engagement and school safety. These were the data points that I thought would be interesting to share with you. This was a couple of years ago where school connectedness, about 73% of our students felt very strongly connected to school, academically motivated at 83%. And again, about 75, 74% felt like there were high expectations put on them around academics. School safety, feeling safe at school, 81%. And treated with respect at school, 75%. So we've got about 20 to 25% of our students that we really need to take a look at and, and dig a little deeper to find out what's not quite working for them in the sense of engagement or school safety. But that we can see here that the majority of our students enjoy being at school and feel connected. This year's SIPSA goals that we tried to focus in on and implement, we began to take a look here at our ELA goals and, and closing the achievement gap. Strategies that we looked at in this moving forward include taking a look at data early and regular data analysis. Early intervention targeting our highest student at risk. And early intervention for my teachers at the beginning of the year starts on the first day of school. Wanting to take a look at the data that's available for them early in the year and to be able to get those interventions started right away. Our ELD and our reading assessment teachers begin to pull students together, particularly our new students at school. And for Ocean View, we have about a 20% of our students are brand new to school. And this does not include our kindergartners. So that means we need to target those students as soon as we start school and begin to assess them and find out where they fit within our target zones for intervention. Professional development, these are continued strategies. Staff turnover, many times can require some additional staff development. The need for data analysis, one of the, probably the things I appreciate the most and one of the things we've needed for years now is the opportunity to give an assessment and then to be able to analyze the data from that assessment. FastBridge is one of the first forms of assessments that I've seen in a long time that we had a pretty quick turnaround and could see the data collected and be able to begin to analyze it. And culturally responsive teaching, these are some of our additional areas and strategies that we want to continue to work on. These are not things that you're going to get to a place and say you're done working on these, but these are things that you're going to always want to tweak and revisit. And again, with new staff coming in, you always want to bring them up to speed and enculturate them into the expectations related to culturally responsive teaching as well. And also use of the extended day for intervention. We've done this for years and it's probably the thing I think is, I appreciate the most out of an early bird, late bird program for our kindergarten through third grade. And that is the opportunity to extend the day, particularly for those who need extra intervention where they're not missing the regular classroom experience. And our goals in math and strategies for reaching those goals. Again, closing the achievement gap and growth for all students. It's a pretty simple statement and you may see this statement for all three schools. That is, that is a goal that, as Ms. Williams mentioned, we work very closely at. So you're going to see our goals and our strategies are very similar, both from school to school as well as for math and English. So again, early and regular data analysis. We want to target our high-risk students and again, capture our new students in the school, get them assessed and looked at as early as possible so we know if they need intervention as well. We don't wait for a trimester to get to know them first, but that we can capture that early on. And again, particular, additional professional development and data analysis in math as well as culturally responsive teaching. Two years ago, I took a group of my teachers down to Alameda County, county office and we did a culturally responsive math 10-week course down there. And it was very enlightening to hear how, even in the instruction of math, how you can really use cultural responsive teaching and hook students' interest in math. So a lot of our teachers have been thinking about how to use that for math and for math intervention. As well as, again, here, this is the use for extended day of intervention for math as well as our reading through the extended day, early bird, late bird program. And again, I like to emphasize without pulling them out of the regular classroom if possible, where we can either do a push-in or small group and remixing of students. Our goals for safety and engagement for students around school culture. Some of the strategies that we've used for several years that seem to help our, particularly our new students feel connected and give our students a common language out on the playground and common spaces, as well as teachers use a common language between grade levels and within themselves. And it really helps our students kind of get a feel for we all use the same type of supportive language. One of the programs we like to use is called the BEST Program. It's kind of a school culture program on how to treat each other out in the playground, in common spaces such as a courtyard or lunchroom. Second step and our social emotional strategies. Some of them are individual or more behavioral strategies and others are more emotional or how to have conversations with other students or between students. Continue to support our student leadership. We have We have campus supervisors. We have fifth grade student leaders. And they help with assemblies. They go into classrooms and do skits. And then they're out on the playground also helping to supervise students and help with conflicts. Rewards, we believe in rewarding students. If they catch them doing a good thing at school, we hand out autar tickets. And then once a week, we give a reward of an autar pop to students. We pull kind of out of a hat for those who've earned autar tickets during the week. We like to prioritize new time safety and organized games. One of the blessings that we look forward to in going back to our school on Jackson Street is the utilization of the field and making sure we get good use out of it during the noon time with some loosely organized games. And prioritizing mental health services as we always have, but again, with a additional focus on post-COVID experiences that students are having. We get a lot of benefit out of group mental health services as well as the individual. Lot of students have different experiences. Loss of family members, divorced families, new to the area. That's where a lot of our group mental health services really do help. And continued PD with our anti-racist teaching, SEL or social emotional learning, social justice, and restorative justice practices are some of the things that we would like to stay in touch with. Resources and supports needed. This was the third question asked of us in this presentation. And as Melissa mentioned, our district support. We look forward to completing the adoption for science and social studies, which we had started prior to COVID and look forward to completing at this next year. Resources to support the needs at our new school site. We feel like we have lived kind of in a divorced world between two campuses as well as remote. Many of our staff haven't seen each other in over a year. We have a new building. We have new leadership. So issues of safety, community, and connectiveness will be our primary goal. And unforeseen resources may be needed. So we look forward to figuring out what our needs are as we move in and being able to fill those needs. Resources to support teacher training and staff development, that's an ongoing need. Teacher support and training, particularly post-COVID, is in many ways going to be getting back into the classroom. And how do we integrate those remote skills into a general ed classroom? We've had ten weeks of practice this year. But moving into next year, I think we're going to find resources needed to kind of help maintain that level of sophistication, may I say. And then again, continue an eye on the anti-racist and culturally responsive teaching.
Thanks, Ms. Georgson.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Ryan Mueller, thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you. Soon as I can share my screen. Hi, everyone. Very happy to be here with you this evening. For this afternoon. Thank you so much. I just want to say that although I've had the opportunity to work on student achievement plans in the past, this is the first one that I've actually been able to completely write. Last year, we started working on our plans, but then COVID hit. And so we were unable to finish. And I also want to point out that the threads of the three elementary schools are very much the same in many ways. And, but we weave a bit of a different tapestry in each area. And so my presentation looks a little different. And if there's things that Ms. Georgson and Ms. Poole have already touched on, I'll probably skip those bullets so I can finish up in a quick ten minutes. We had contributions with our site council this year, our instructional leadership and our ELD teams. Our goals were under English Language Arts, Math, Climate, and Technology. And we used the same data sources that were used at the other sites. We were asked, how did we address our eighteen, nineteen SIPSA goals? Because those are the, that is the site plan that we were working on during COVID. And what I wanted to say is that although our strategies were not always able to be implemented, our, our goals were always addressed and sometimes addressed in different ways, given that we were in an unexpected and different arena. But the goals never changed, although sometimes the strategies did. I also want to say that one thing I learned when I was an assistant principal from, at the high school from Ms. Ritchie is that every year that you rewrite your school site plan, you want to do it incrementally, you want to do it carefully. You don't want to throw everything out with the bath water and then have a whole new plan every year. Otherwise, you don't have a chance to meet your goals. So you, you make incremental changes. In terms of addressing our eighteen, nineteen SIPSA goals during the COVID year of 2020, under intervention, we had reading, English, language development, and math.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I don't see your shared screen. May I help you with that?
Of course.
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
You should have said something sooner.
That's okay, you were, you were on a roll. I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh, no. Oh, dear. I'm sorry, is that better? How's that?
Yeah, so I think I'm controlling it now. What slide should I go to?
I'm so sorry. Gosh, you guys, you should have waved me down. I was talking away and you're not seeing anything. Go to the next slide, please, thank you. I love that you're driving now. That's perfect. Thank you. I'm not going to go repeat myself. So one of the things that we did in intervention was have our academic support hubs when students were still remote. And we also had a program called Coyote Tutoring, which was taught by a credential teacher. And she worked remotely with students. And we provided hours of tutoring for students who were struggling with remote. And they, we created a program modeled after the one at the high, at the middle school where students, high school students were monitored by this credential teacher. And they worked a number, we had a whole team of students working with our younger students. And that was very well received and was very successful in helping these students complete their homework and do particularly their math and writing. In mental health, we had the same elements as Ocean View and Marin. One thing that we, that I really focused on was one-on-one engagement. I worked carefully to call to families to find out why kids were only partially engaged, for example, or not engaged at all. And we had a unique PTA Care to Call campaign, which was new this year, where we, the PTA organized every, every parent, room parent to call all of this, all of the families and reach out and let them know what supports we had and what supports they could get in the community and just make a personal connection. And that was really important for community building. Next slide, please. In terms of technology and curriculum, this was one of our goals in our, in our previous SIPSA. Of course, and it was kind of funny to actually read what, what the goal was for in the previous SIPSA, because it was like get kids familiar with the internet and on a computer once in a while. What we did this year, like far surpassed any of that. We had devices and individual tech support for all students. We had our educational tech TSA. We had remote instruction, professional development for all the teachers who were new in the gen ed classrooms and the prep teachers who took over. So we had an amazing amount of professional development for teachers. We had new online programs, IXL, Reading A to Z, Reflex Math, et cetera, et cetera, that students were very familiar with using and getting on. And then we also did our units of study, reading and writing. We had lessons that were done, videos from the actual teachers' college that, that taught these lessons remotely. And then the teachers could follow up, which was really wonderful that we, as all three sites, were able to provide this. Next slide, please. In order to meet our goals, we really focused on teacher collaboration and leadership. That's always important. And in these areas, we were able to do it with our SST process. We had a lot of SSTs this year because we saw kids were having challenges. So we would, had, had at least weekly, sometimes more. Of course, the IEPs, we had the grade level collaborations, the cross-site collaborations, which have already been mentioned. And then on the FastBridge assessment, I just want to take a moment and talk about FastBridge. We had to have, it was new. We had to have PD on how to administer the FastBridge. Then they needed to do it for fall and each trimester. It was a screener. But I want to point out that whenever you're starting with a new large assessment platform such as this, the first year is really just as it was before when we had got used to doing the Sback or the CASP. We, you have to learn how to do the test. And as you learn how to administer the test and you do it repeatedly for all students throughout the next future years, that's when the, the real accuracy and the real information is going to get there. So we're just on our baby steps on FastBridge right now. We have data, yes, but we don't have anything to compare it to. And our teachers are still becoming the experts that they will be in the future. And I think that's really significant. Next slide, please. In terms of maintaining continuity, that was one of our biggest goals for both remote and in-person students. We did attendance and engagement monitoring that went through the whole year. We planned for hybrid and then we pivoted to the modified full day. You already know how we recreated our special added intervention schedules and our teacher and student assignments. And then, of course, we had continuous assessment with our LPAC, which was a major effort this year to get all those students tested because we had so many remote. And then refining the administration of FastBack, FastBridge. Next slide, please. And then implementing the SIPSA that's coming up in twenty-one, twenty-two. I want to bolster the new things, all the things that we just learned that were new, that how different ways to reach our goals. And we learned all kinds of different ways to reach our goals that I just talked to you about. But then we want to revive what we missed because there was stuff in our SIPSA that, that was this year that we couldn't do. So we talked about it a lot. And the next few slides show reviving what we missed this year. Our FastBridge scores. In it, I just took the data and put it in a little table showing that in fall, you know, four percent high risk, twelve percent in T2, five percent in T3. I want to remind you that our teachers are still learning how to give this assessment. But the advanced and low risk is a large, a large percentage. This does give us a lot of information for our intervention teachers and for who's to pull, who's to be pulled. And we talk about these scores at SSTs. Next slide. And the same for reading. And our reading scores in advanced and low risk are ninety percent. And next slide. Now, the strategy is to renew. Safety net protocol, that's a similar to an SST where teachers can bring, we provide substitutes for teachers to come meet with the intervention team and myself. And we go through the students, it's usually mid-year, who might have been not caught before in different, different strat, different identifications. And so we pull those kids up and we look and see what individual kids, what do they need. I want to point out that the new teacher support and professional development that we've done in the past, we weren't able to do this year, but we will definitely focus back on that, especially training them in areas such as reading and writing or curriculum trainings. They're going to need, new teachers are going to need the FastBridge training again, right? And then assessment really stays as well, which is something that Ms. Poole spoke of. Next slide. I really want to start spending some time focusing on how to do, how to review the data, both for the FastBridge and to get back to looking at student work and comparing student work. This is something that we often did in the past in our collaboration days and is incredibly useful. As an individual teacher, if you're looking at your kid's work, you don't have much of a gauge unless you can compare it to other students. And that's a really wonderful practice that is successful in helping make teachers have better strategies for teaching. Next slide. And then, of course, the cross-site collaboration. We did it specifically for report cards this time, but we've done it in the past for all kinds of grade levels work. And we'll revise, vitalize that across the three sites. And the next, thank you, Ms. Williams. And finally, looking forward to the curriculum pilots and adoption, specifically in science, history, social studies. And of course, we're already working on the literature. We have a program at Cornell called GLAD, Guided Language Academic Development. And that's really wonderful. Some teachers have been asking for refreshers on that. And that's built into our current SIPSA as well as our strategies with units of study, reading and writing. Next slide. And the supports we need, we need time. All of these changes take time to show growth. So I appreciate that, that's one thing we need. We need, I appreciate your renewed commitment to lower class size. That's wonderful. And we need teamwork. So come on down and visit us at Cornell anytime. We'd be happy to include you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan Mueller. If you'd like me to rob you of some time at the end there. But we really appreciate you speaking at a, at a breakneck pace so that there is some time for questions. So I would turn it over to you, President Hinckley, if there are questions and comments.
Sure. I will open it to questions and comments from the board. Wow, you guys did such a thorough job. All right. Trustee Jaron.
Okay, hi. It's so great that you principals are here. I, I and all the board, I'm sure, want to acknowledge that this is like one of the toughest moments of the school year, right? The closing now, not to mention pandemic, but just all the regular stuff. So really appreciate your being here with us. I wanted to ask a couple of things, two or three, maybe. One is about our kids that truly do need intervention. And normally, the topic goes to the interventionist teachers and the support teachers. But I really want to know because those kids, regardless of the intervention they get, they are definitely with the classroom teacher eighty, ninety percent of the time, right? The school week. So I wanted to ask, what, what are the teachers learning and doing differently? Both in terms of sort of what they've gained from PD, anti-racist stuff to culturally responsive stuff to sell. What are the teachers learning and staff in general that truly makes a difference for kids in the classroom? And, and I mean specifically academics. That's one.
I'd like to address that. One of the things that's in our SIPSA, and I know that the other schools are working on too, and this is sort of planned for next year because we're just touching, touching into it, is the, the training on the universal design for learning and incorporating the strategies that work for special ed students as well as gen ed students in the gen ed classroom. And that is something that I'm very excited about and that we're, but we're just, we're just getting, getting going on the UDL training. So that, that I think is something that will really address what you're talking about, which is helping the, the gen ed teachers get more strategy, more intervention strategies for students who are having challenges progressing. And then I, you know, I think it's, right now, I'll, I'll hand over the floor. But in terms of data analysis, as, as Dr. Wells has said, that it comes from data, learning, identifying the students who need the, who need the work. And so as we learn to use our FastBridge and look at our FastBridge more, that will be very helpful. And, and, and the last part is, well, not the last part, but another part in addition to identifying, identifying the students is to making sure that we have the qualified teachers. For example, in the math intervention period, time this year, I was able to hire credential teachers rather than other support staff to run math program. And I think that is a And I think that is a really important component as well. So to have the highly qualified teachers in the interventions.
You know, Clementina, if I can just address that because the way I understood your question had to do with not so much what are our intervention programs, but how do our general ed teachers address the needs of our kids? I think all of our classroom teachers would tell you they're the first intervention teacher. They're the primary intervention teacher. And if you want to know what it is that they've learned, I would say in my 14 years, I think the most powerful tool that they've learned really is the work we did around units of study in reading instruction and writing instruction. The number of teachers I knew who had taught for 10 years or longer, who threw the training particularly around reading instruction, finally understood how to teach reading, particularly the early phonics and the early reading skills. You get to the upper grades and teachers don't have to utilize those skills. So, you know, whether you're a child who's struggling or whether you're a child who is proficient, you still need a teacher who needs, who understands how to teach reading in elementary. So I would say that was probably the most powerful thing we've done. And I would hope soon we would continue to revisit those practices and those professional development opportunities.
Did you want to ask another question?
Um, yes, please. I just wanted to mention that given the percentages of the kids that, that either did the, the regular or the aggressive growth, I think, does, does that inform us that because of such an affluent community we have, that the parents, 60% plus parents are doing a good job at home, Zoom? I mean, be it pandemic or non-pandemic? And does it provide us with an opportunity to use so many of our resources on the kids that need it the most? Meaning with those kids that, that sometimes we term at-risk kids. And, you know, if, if, so, so I just, that's really more a comment that, that to salute our parents that, that really do stuff at home with their kids. And then the other comment I wanted to make was asking you maybe once again, in terms of now more the emotional development of the kids and the PD that's been, you know, talked about. And, and, and I hear teachers have been highly interested in anti-racist professional development. And where does that take us down the road? What do you see as, as really having an impact on the teachers and what that means for, in the classroom? And I'll stop with that question.
I would love to just offer a couple of sentences and then I would love for the principals to chime in. I think that we're starting from a place where we recognize that intentionally or not, our curriculum and instruction is sort of inherently focused on the dominant culture, which is the white culture. And so I think we realize that there is a need to sort of lift that up, name that, help teachers to get underneath that, help teachers understand sort of their own part in sort of perpetuating sort of the dominance that we see, not just in schools, but in society. And then I think where we go with that is we give teachers strategies to be able to identify and lift up alternative narratives in the classroom. I think in the first case that that helps students who have been historically marginalized to feel seen, right? That helps me as a black child in a classroom to feel seen. If there is a book that reflects my identity, if there's a unit that reflects my identity, if there's a history lesson that incorporates the experiences of my people, right? So I think number one, sort of being able to be seen in a classroom is really important. And then I think that that can help our students and help our teachers to develop sort of a more critical consciousness, to help us sort of interact with what's happening in the world in more critical ways. So I think if you're asking sort of for a straight line between, you know, math instruction, English instruction, and sort of what specific anti-racist teaching strategy might get you there, I think that the answer is that it's, it's sort of more complex and nuanced than that. I think anti-racist teaching is about asking us to think about sort of how we're showing up in educational spaces and about how we're sort of working with all students, not just students of color. I think white students too benefit from being in an environment where they are hearing other narratives, where they are seeing other stories, where they are having other experiences. And so I think this is, this is very much sort of not a linear process. I think it's sort of a process in which we are always engaging, right? And I think our teachers have been really excited about sort of trying, trying strategies, trying lessons, trying activities to start this conversation. But I think we are just at the beginning of a journey. And I think it's really important for us to be committed to this work and to be committed to seeing progress and change occur over time. And those are just my couple of thoughts about that.
Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. So trying to go quickly, I'll just say, really appreciate everything Assistant Superintendent Williams just said and was happy to see the focus on culturally responsive teaching and anti-racist professional development and would very strongly encourage those to continue the implications of that as far as achievement, expectations for students, where students feel safe, how they thrive, what the expectations are in classrooms, how those are determined, et cetera, like the, the ways in which those things are implicated throughout the classroom and the way that students are being judged is there's no, you can't overestimate that. So I just like can't say enough how important that work is. And I, I am happy that it's happening and I applaud the principals for, you know, for treating that as, as it's important. And then also just wanted to say quickly, like listening to Principal Ryan Mueller talk about the different room parents and, you know, reaching out to the individual students in their class. It was just one example of the different sort of benefits or learnings, lessons that, that we were able to sort of take from this really difficult period of time. And just wanted to, to say that that's great and to, and, and I think you all touched on it some anyway, but just to encourage, you know, not losing those, those pieces because we can always have a stronger community, like a more connected community. And I think it's great to keep those things in mind. The two questions that I had, and if we don't have time to totally in-depth, I'll just sort of throw them out there to sort of think about, was just, we all touched on the, the impact of having specialty teachers who needed to, to change and sort of move into general teaching. And just wondering the, like, how maybe preparation for the next year changes or something like that? Like if there's already an understanding of the implications, like the impact of what that did as far as, you know, students losing certain supports, you know, during that last sort of few months period of time where teachers had to sort of juggle around and just kind of encourage an intentional thinking of how that will shape maybe the beginning of the school year, maybe all of next school year. I'm not sure to kind of be mindful of that. And then the other thing I just wanted to sort of throw out or ask about was the adoption of the social studies curriculum. And just wanted to ask, or if not time to ask, to sort of encourage a really intentional sort of thought process around, you know, when we talk about the culturally responsive teaching and professional development geared toward anti-racism, et cetera. It's super important to make sure that that's happening in all different areas. But particularly when you're talking about how you're going to teach social studies and, you know, history and different cultures and et cetera. It's just so, so important and there's a lot of work that can be done. Not any sort of shade being thrown at our district, but just looking at, you know, the way these things have been taught and, you know, that these stories are told by the, the victors, et cetera. And just so to encourage a really intentional focus on, you know, sort of broadening and being really forward-thinking and progressive as that curriculum is adopted.
So I would like to address that. We, we were in the middle of a, of working on history and social studies adoption and working with UC Berkeley, and I don't remember the name of the group, Ms. Williams, but you can remind me.
Social Science Project.
The History Social Science Project. And their whole focus was on exactly what you just, just said, Melissa. And then we were, we were just getting going on that. And then we, and then, of course, we had a pandemic and all of that shut down. And now we really, I know teachers are, are just hankering to get back to that and that that will be a good place for us to focus to get going on the, actually getting history and social studies adoption through, with a purposeful intention of exactly what you just said. And we're, we're, we would love your support on, on that as we go, as we get back to next year. And and that's all I'll say.
Trustee Corzo Clark.
Yeah, I had a question about FastBridge, and this is general. So, and if you can answer this, but in all of the SPSAs, the, you, you talked about how providing like for, if a student is at risk for math specifically, they'll get intervention. Could you just explain like what that looks like? Obviously, like it's individualized per student, but how often they're getting that intervention per week? And when that student is like reassessed as no longer needing intervention or needing more frequent, whether it's at the next testing of the FastBridge or if it has to do with their in-class grades? Yeah.
I'd love to jump in and respond to that one. That's a really great, important question, Leo. So thanks for asking that. Yeah, so it has to do with, so, so we definitely, we definitely target our kiddos that we notice are at high risk and on FastBridge and, and that teachers have concerns about, right? This gets back to our need to have multiple measures, right? As, as Principal Ryan Mueller mentioned, it's really important to note that we are in our first year of implementation, which means we're learning how to give the assessment. Not everyone participated in it and in it, and so we're learning as we go. And even with that said, when a kiddo is indicated at high risk for math, we, we seek to get them intervention. The ideal is three times a week at least, right? We would love every day. That's not possible with our staffing support. But we hope to get them into intervention about three days a week if possible on a regular. So I believe what the research shows is 30 minutes a day for, you know, and it's for as many days as possible is highly effective. And that's something that we strive towards. We don't always make it depend, but depending on the need of the student, the greater the need, the, the more we prioritize them with our staffing support and our, there are resources available. That also being said, we, it's not just at every trimester that we analyze our need there. Their students are being referred and conversations among teachers are really important in, in, in referring students to these groups. While, while they're, they're set typically at the beginning of the year, we have, you know, is when we initially analyze our data, we do encourage, you know, fluctuation in those groups. We recognize that, you know, identifying a student for intervention for the entire year is not always appropriate. Sometimes it is if they're needing that level of support for sure. But what we hope to do is get them the intervention that they need and get them back into the gen ed classroom. So.
Thank you.
There's also another way of looking at it in that is to do the intervention during the regular or outside the math time. So we have done it where particularly with our youngest students, we'll pull them three times a week, maybe during a half an hour where it may be a read aloud or a choice time or something is that, and it's not math time. So they don't get the intervention instead of their regular math. They get it in addition to. So there are many different models that you can do. There's also a model where you would regroup, taking your regular ed teachers and regrouping them so that each one picks either a particular level or a particular skill. And the students are pre-assessed for that. And then that allows several weeks later to be assessed again, maybe for a different skill. And a student who may be strong in one skill but weak in another may, may need intervention in that way. There's a lot of barriers related to our bell schedule that limits our ability to provide intervention that way for all grade levels. But it is a proven method that keeps students with general ed teachers and focused in the skills that, where they're at and not necessarily pulling them away from a classroom.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to do something a little different in our board meetings. We have about a two minutes before 5:30 close session. And I'm hoping that I can kind of get into the next step as we wrap up, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. We do still have one board member with his hand raised. So I wanted to do that last question. Is that okay?
Sure, with the board.
All right, Vice President Doss.
Yeah, I was just wondering how students' IEPs or IPEs are incorporated into the FastBridge assessments?
It's a good question. So my understanding of our FastBridge assessments is they don't necessarily have, they're, they're not incorporated into them. Our special education students are assessed in the same way that our general education students are assessed on the same standards and on the same benchmarks that they, that the FastBridge has for each trimester. However, the interpretation of those results is where that happens. And it could be that they have accommodations to provide those tests, like if they need a separate setting or if there's, you know, the kinds of assessments that are, or the accommodations that we typically provide in class to those kiddos that they're entitled to based on their 504s and IEPs, but it's not a different assessment. So that part is, is administered in the, it's, it's the same content. And so, but when we look at the results, it's important to put that lens of what each individual child needs in order to achieve what they're, what we're, what our high standards hope for them. And so it comes in the interpretation and data analysis. Well, so we, I hope that answers it. So it's not the assessment that changes. They all get, get the same assessment, but if they're entitled to supports through their IEP or through their 504, we provide those accommodations and then analyze the results accordingly.
In addition to that, the assessments can be used to determine what kind of progress a student who receiving specialized services is making or not making and can be used to exit a student once that student meets or exceed grade level standards.
I would also add that at least at Cornell, I'm not sure about the other schools, but we, it, the area of utilizing the accommodations for the FastBridge, it wasn't definitely an area of growth for this year that became apparent as the year progressed. So that is something that we will be understanding how to do better. It's, those accommodations are built into the Sback and, and we need to learn how they're built into the FastBridge and how we can provide them so that students are taking the exams with their, with their accommodate, their appropriate accommodations. And I also wanted to say to Leo, Leo, that the intervention teachers usually assess about every six weeks of the students in the class, and that's the, the cycle usually.
Great, thank you. So we are at our closing time. I'll hand it back to you, Superintendent Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Hinckley. I just wanted the board to know as we move forward, we're going to be making some amendments to our, our SIPSA's, our school plans for student achievement, and everything starts with data. We're definitely going to continue to look at our data, but we're going to look at it a little deeper. We're going to look at three years' patterns worth of data. We're going to look at disaggregating data over three-year periods, looking at all of our subgroups. And then we're going to come up with goals, targeted goals. For example, if 75% of our students are currently meeting grade level standards, we may want to have a target goal of 80% meeting grade level standards at the end of the year and also disaggregate by groups. For example, if a subgroup is meeting, have 40% are meeting grade level standards, we may want it to be 55% afterwards. That's going to be critically important. In addition to that, we're going to continue to engage in progress monitoring through looking at administering a number of assessments throughout the year and engaging in some evidence-based practices whereby staff get to huddle up and look at how well their students are doing or not and come up with strategies for making adjustments around that piece. So that's going to be important to do. And so I just wanted to highlight some of those major adjustments that we'll be making moving forward. And, and it would give us more of a laser-like focus around our number one goal and that student achievement for all.
And just to clarify, you mean going forward, starting next year? Not that these are going to be different when they come back to us on consent?
I think, yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Just making sure you're not asking them to redo it all in two weeks. Okay, great. Thank you for that perspective and forward-looking summary. So, and thank you to all the principals and staff for, you know, as usual, so much information. We did all read them. So if we could get the slideshows also sent to Julie. So if we could get the slideshows also sent to Julie so we can post those online and share them with the board, that would be great. Thanks, everybody. See some of you later. And a few of you in a few minutes. So we're, this workshop is adjourned.
See you later.